Hello and welcome to this issue of Truth or Politics under host Darlene Price. And tonight, we're gonna, I'm gonna call this, nickname this Mayor Keck, the boss hog of leche. And we be the dukes of hazard. Anyways, um, welcome aboard. We got a lot of new people here tonight. And so we're gonna do a quick update and refer people to the, uh, to the YouTube links so they can get caught up. For all you new people, welcome aboard. We want to thank you for being here. And we also want to thank MBR TV, who are TV station who carries us all the time, and our hero Steve Hall. We also want to thank all the people behind the scenes of Truth or Politics. All of our killers, we call them the killer bees and insiders who give us information. Want to thank them very much. And I want to personally thank the Somerset City Council for doing the right thing last night. Thank you so much for listening to the citizens and doing the right thing. And I also want to thank all the citizens of Somerset and Plaski County. There was a, a whole lot of people there. Almost close to 100 people there at that meeting last night, and that's what we're gonna cover. But first, let me update. We got new people that are joining us who don't know what's, who kinda don't have the whole picture. What happened was, a few years ago, Truth or Politics, we run into a story where, uh, a mayor, and it turns out, it's just the mayor. The city council didn't even know about it. They didn't vote on it or anything. That's one of the things we found out last night. He decided all by himself to bring in, apparently, uh, over 50 million gallons of toxic waste from four different landfills and run it through a highly defective wastewater treatment plant into Pittman Creek, and some of it actually spilled into Sinking Creek without even being processed. And Pittman Creek and Sinking Creek run into Lake Cumberland, Lake Cumberland, excuse me, empties into the Cumberland River. And literally millions of people all the way down the river, uh, and animals, all the way down to Nashville, get their drinking water. And, and it's a huge, this area around here, we got some folks from LA doing this thing. A huge, you know, resort area around here. It's tourism, you know, we have, we, I'm sitting right now in the middle of the Daniel Boone National, the beautiful Daniel Boone National Forest. And, you know, we have all kinds of wildlife. We have wolves, uh, elk, deer, bears, lots of black bears. Where I live, I had black bears come through my yard all the time. And it really disturbed me when I found out about this. Also, I have grandchildren and children that, about four years ago, when we learned about this and started investigating, about a month before I heard about this, I, my husband and I were pulling these kids behind our pontoon boat in Pittman Creek. So thi- this concerns me greatly. I have family that live in Plaski County. Also, my husband and I have lakefront property in Plaski County. So we were also taxpayers of Plaski County. So we have skin in the game, as you say. Okay, now if you want to know more about this, here's the research for anybody who says we didn't do our homework. Here it is. There's almost 2,000 documents here that absolutely prove up our story that this wastewater treatment plant is highly defective. It's received numerous notices from State Water District and also communication from the State EPA, telling them that's, you know, testing that it's, it's not working. So, uh, if you want to learn more about that, we did a whole documentary. It's called Lake Cumberland, What Really Lies Beneath. All you gotta do is go to YouTube, type in Lake Cumberland, what really lies beneath, and it'll come right up. There's two parts. The first part's kind of the human interest on the scene filming. The second part, I know documents are boring, but some of you are asking for, we did not post 1,200 documents. We posted the top 100. Uh, but those top 100 or so are compelling. Please go read those documents. And it, and anybody wants to review this, you can. We've posted off and on, we've done, how many, how many shows on this, Michael Mann, have we done? A dozen, okay? And I have appeared before the city council. Last night was the third time, imploring them, arguing with Mayor Keck to, to stop bringing in this toxic waste. So now you're kinda caught up. I, I, there's a lot more, as you can see, there's a lot more to this story. Please go to Lake Cumberland, What Really Lies Beneath, and you'll get, you know, a more in-depth story. And I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna rehash the whole thing. What I want to do is talk about what happened last night. What happened last night was democracy at its best, absolutely. We had some amazing testimony from citizens. And you can go watch this, you know, it's, it's recorded. Just go on YouTube or go on Facebook and just type in City of Somerset or Somerset City Council, Somerset Kentucky City Council. Cause I know we got people out of state watching this now. And you will pull up the city council meeting last night. Now, it'll say, it's, it's got a blank page that says, we'll start shortly. You know, if you sit there, it's not ever gonna start. You have to click on it. You have to click on the link and then it'll start, okay? Cause I had people tell me, it's not working. I'm sitting here, well, cause it's not starting shortly. It's starting shortly after you click on the link. So you have to click on the little thing now. And then it'll start. What happened was, um, some amazing testimony in front of the city council. Um, we had a guy, his name was, what really got me, and I had talked to this guy prior, was an individual by the name of, uh, Neil Shoemaker. He, he's a retired engineer. This guy knows his stuff. You know, he's highly educated. He's very articulate. And, you know, he's just as down-to-earth as you can be. And, you know, what he said, please go watch this. I can't do what he said justice. I just can't. It, it was extremely compelling. You know, he talked about his wife's got cancer, and he talked about why, why would you take a risk like this? Why would you keep bringing this stuff in for three cents a gallon? Cause that's all they're making off of this. Uh, you know, it, it's not worth, you know, putting everybody at risk. And, and he's right. He's so right. And then we also had an attorney, McShirley, got up and, and did a solid, he, you know, he, he liked me, he did his homework and he had, you know, he made them commit to how many gallons? Cause there was some missing, some different information out there. People getting different information. And some of that is John Adams, the city attorney, that's your fault because you've coughed up wrong information in the past and your math didn't jive. And, you know, they're really bad. The city, John Adams, the city attorney, has a track record, a documented track record of trying to keep this stuff covered up. He has. I mean, he tries not to cough up documents. He coughs them up piecemeal. He tells you one thing and then you find out it's another. So a lot of that misinformation that Mayor Keck talks about, he tries to put on us, is really coming from his city attorney and him. Okay? Cause it is incredibly misleading when Mayor Keck, for over a year now, we've been telling this story over and over again, is telling people, uh, you know, our, 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 our system is fine. Our wastewater treatment plant is fine. It works fine. Everything's fine. No, it ain't. You are, you know, when I say you're misleading the public, I'm being kind, okay? You are more than misleading the public. Your wastewater treatment plant is not fine, says so. You know, document after document after document from the State Water District and from the EPA going back and forth. And you acknowledge this. Your, your water district or your wastewater treatment plant, they have to answer these. So they have all these answers going back to the State EPA and the State Water District saying, uh, well, the reason it's, we're out of compliance is there's too many car washers. Um, now, now we got blood worms in our effluent. Last night, Mayor Keck was talking about how great their effluent was. Well, just a couple of months ago, they got hit because they had blood worms. You can't make this stuff up, people. I'm telling you. We posted this documents. I've got the documents. They, their answer back from the wastewater treatment plant to the State Water District was that they have blood worms in the effluent. That's how bad it is. You know, in fact, we called the show Attack of the Bloodworms. Remember that? So we, now if you look at Google blood worms and what they're after, they're after E. coli. Okay? Folks, it's just simple. They have been dogged and dogged and dogged repeatedly in violation over and over again over E. coli and other things, okay? There are several times in these, in these numbers where I've had experts look at this and they tell me this is 10 times the allowable amount of E. coli going out of this system that he says works into Pittman Creek, and they're testing Pittman Creek, okay? 10 times the level of E. coli, allowable E. coli. They should have shut Pittman Creek down. There should have been notices gone, gone out to the health department. To date, the health department is still on the blind. Nobody's telling the state health department or the regional health department anything about this. And that, I just find appalling. So, the treatment plant's not working. He was misleading the, the, the public. And last night, he, he really got, Mayor Keck got called on it. All of it. And the citizens stood up. And there were several, several citizens that really gave compelling testimony, but, but I'm telling you, uh, this guy Neil Shoemaker, you gotta, you gotta watch his testimony. If you don't watch anything else, at the begi-, the city council meeting will start. They'll say a prayer and do the pledge and everything. And then, and then it pretty much goes right into it. Neil Shoemaker, I think, is the third speaker. First, there's McShirley, then me. I have to run my mouth a little bit. And then, uh, and Neil Shoemaker gets up. You gotta watch his testimony. I'm telling you, it's, it's just very compelling. So what happened was, then these people spoke. People in the audience were definitely, um, pushing to have a vote for the city council to be counted. To stand up. In fact, Neil Shoemaker was one of the ones. He goes, Mayor Keck, I know, here's a guy talking about, dudes, here this poor guy is, is literally in tears, talking about his wife having cancer and stuff. And Mayor Keck's interrupting and, and condescending to this guy. You know, and he's running for governor, really? Yeah, if, if, here's your sign. That's all I gotta say, you know? Um, not good, not good. But one of the things that, you know, when he's interrupting Shoemaker, I loved it cause Shoemaker goes, no, I'm talking now. I'm not taking questions. I, I, I'm talking now. And he shut Mayor Keck down. I swear, I wanted to go over and hug him when he did that. It, it just, it was beautiful. Anyway, one of the things he said is, here's what I want to do tonight. He says, I want every one of you to stand up and be counted. We want to know how you stand on this. I want to vote. I want somebody to make a motion and second it, and I want you all to vote. So he kept pushing that. Well, Mayor Keck wasn't having that. So, a lot of people got to talk. Um, it was, you know, it was amazing. Please go watch it. Then there's some, they, they did regular business. You might want to skip past that. And then towards the end, when they end it, he brings up, okay, does any of the council member want to talk about anything? New business or whatever. And so the council members start bringing this back up again, much to Mayor Keck's chagrin. Okay? And the council members, just, there's several of them that have been against this. And then the rest of them have either stood quiet or, you know, just went along, go along, to get along. Well, I, I, I think the powerful testimony of the citizens last night and, you know, the sheer amount of people that were there, this, this is a small community, you know? This is like Smallville, USA. And you'd have that many people to show up at the city council meeting, you know? All of a sudden, they had to take it serious. And, and, and I'm glad they did. So what happened was, the long and the short of it was, if finally, Mayor Keck did everything he could to avoid this going to a vote. Him and, and, and John Adams, the city attorney. But go watch how they squirm around this. So no, we're voting for a resolution to talk about, we're voting for, I mean, they tried to reword it. You talk about some tricky lawyer talk, you know? It, it, it just looks, it looks slippery. That's what it looked like. They did everything they could to keep this city council from voting. And it didn't work. Thank you, city council. Thank you for citizens. Cause the citizens kept yelling out, vote, vote. We want to vote now. They did. And they did unanimously. The Somerset City Council voted to stop the leche, period. End of story. Should have been, should have been game over. Should have been game over. That's what one would think. One would think that when a legislative body votes for something unanimously, then that's, then the mayor would have to follow them. So, that's not what happened here. Mayor Keck has basically given the double middle finger to all the city councilmen and the citizens that were there last night. Because guess what's been happening today? I got called from insiders. I got called from councilmen, several of them. The ultimate, my insiders have insiders, you know? I need, I need to do that song. Uh, every breath you take, every step you take, I'm watching you, Mayor Keck. I got insiders everywhere. And what Mayor Keck decided to do is give the double middle finger to the city council and to his citizens there tonight. And I don't say that lightly. I say that completely. And I'm very comfortable saying that because what he did today, and I got calls on this, was at least seven tanker cars. Now, keep in mind, what normally happens is maybe one or two show up a day. Well, because, uh, Watco Incorporated, you know, the trucking company bringing this stuff in, they're afraid that, you know, hey, this may come to an end, which it should have, as of last night. Uh, so we'll just double up or triple up. So last word I got is seven trucks went through today and they had three more on the way. And, you know, Mayor Keck is allowing this to happen. Cause the city council voted, no, Mayor Keck, you're doing this. By the way, what also came up in the city council meeting, very interesting, was the city council members confirmed that this had never been voted on. That's right, folks. Mayor Keck, the boss hog of leche, uh, decided on his own, I guess, to bring in this leche, this toxic waste, over 50 million gallons. It was never voted on by the city council. Several city council members last night stated, we didn't know about this. And one of them said, we wouldn't have known about this if it wasn't for Darlene Price, AKA me. And I appreciate that. But, you know, uh, this is what we do. So, never was voted on to begin with, but they did vote to stop it. And Mayor Keck has given them the double middle finger. And basically, to the citizens out there, he's giving you the double middle finger too. Because also what happened last night, anybody that wanted to have an opportunity could speak. Guess how many people got up and spoke in defense of Mayor Keck in this toxic waste? Guess how many? Zero, goosey, niche, nada, nine, none. Not one person other than Mayor Keck stood up for this leche. You know, I think we had one city council member over there. He started, cause he's the one that was defending it the other two times that I showed up. You know, running his mouth. But he kinda got voted last night. And then he had a, I think he had a sudden change of tune, cause he also voted to stop this stuff. So, yeah, go ahead, Michael.
One of the things that, is either the mayor or the guy beside him said, well, we'll write an ordinance on, on stopping it. And then one of the commissioners or, uh, council members said, uh, well, we didn't create an ordinance to start it.
Right. Good point. What Michael Mann just said is, uh, you know, John Adams, the slippery attorney, I'm sorry, but you are. Cause I, I got some, you gotta read some of these emails that we've posted between him and I going back, trying to hide this stuff. John Adams said, you're right. He said, well, well, let's do ordinance, you know? But in other words, let's delay, delay, delay. And then one of the city council members said, thank you for that, city, you know? Way to show some balls, city council, man. My, my heroes, the Somerset City Council. Way to show some way votes, man. But anyway, he said back to him, he said, we didn't do a city ordinance to pass it. Nobody passed it. You know, in fact, one of the city councilmen said, you just snuck this in on us. That's what, and that's what he did. That's what he did. He snuck, he put the sneak on the city councilman. That's what he did. So, um, that's kinda what happened last night. I want to hit some other points. Uh, make sure I didn't writ- Okay, and of cour-, course, Mayor Keck did last night what he always does. He, he says, we meet state standards, we meet state standards, we meet state standards. Okay, well, first off, that is incredibly misleading to the public. You are not meeting state standards. I said this over a year ago. We first came out with this documentary, Lake Cumberland, What Really Lies Beneath, a month and a year ago. One year and one month ago, we came out with this, okay? And, uh, he immediately, we meet state standards. No, you don't. You've been getting one violation after another. By the way, these violations, go read them, folks. Go to Lake Cumberland, What Really Lies Beneath. Go through some of these documents. Or come here. I'll show them to you. And, and it's not just one. There's dozens of these from 2016 on. Let, let me make a point before I forget. From 2016 on, I didn't go past 2016. What does that tell you? That tells you that Mayor Keck knew his system wasn't working. He knew. You knew Mayor Keck that this wastewater treatment plant was defective. And then you alone, you alone made the decision, cause the city council threw you under the bus last night. You alone made the decision to bring in over 50 million gallons of toxic waste. And as of today, eight more, what, seven more tanker trucks? So we're, we're probably into 60 million gallons by now. You did this, Mayor, all on your own. You did. City council didn't do it. There was no ordinance. Nobody voted on it. You did this, Mayor Keck. So, uh, I lost my original thought there for a minute. Hold on, hold on here. Uh, okay, so, but his, can't, go ahead.
Other than what few emails that Jen's had, is all of those papers violations?
No, 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 no. This is a combination. There's tons of violations in here. It's by year. I've got, I've got, I've got chronological order. There's also communications going back and forth between me and the State Water District. Okay? One of the communications is the head of the State Water District saying, no, we're not gonna test for C8, these forever chemicals. We're not, we're not required to and, and we're not going to. Oh, okay. So you know that they're bringing this stuff in. You know the, the system's defective. But what the hell? We ain't gonna test. Who cares? I mean, that is an email by this woman named Robinson at the State Water District at Frankfurt. This is Frankfurt at the worst, which is why we need legislation to change that. And I'm gonna hit that in a minute, okay? But one of the things that Mayor Keck did, again, which he does every time, uh, is he said, we meet state standards. No, you freaking don't. I've got violation after violation after violation where you're in violation of the state standards. These violations state that they can fine you $250,000 a day. That's how serious these violations are. You're not in compliant. Your system's not working. Also, he's talking about, well, it goes through the system. No, not always. I've got letter after letter after letter from the wastewater treatment plant to, and that's what some of this is, to the State Water District explaining why this, the nitrogen levels are so low. Why, why, and guess what's, what some of these explanations are? Oh, well, we had a spillover in the Sinking Creek. Okay, another word, AKA, uh, it didn't go through the wastewater treatment. It didn't, it wasn't treated. There was buildup and then they have every excuse in the book in these letters why, you know, why these spillways, spillovers happened. And one of them was, and these are some lame excuses too, folks. And, and again, that's part of these documents. Too many car washes in the city of Somerset. This wastewater treatment plant, folks, is out in the middle of nowhere. It's nowhere near the main drag where they have these car washes. Nowhere near. No way car washes caused this stuff. No, it's called leche caused this stuff, okay? You took a defective system that wasn't handling what it could handle. You added now over 50 million gallons of toxic waste and, and of course, you're gonna have a spillover. And, and it's going straight into what's called Sinking Creek. Okay? A small creek, which this treatment center, part of it, is right on Sinking Creek. I mean, it, it's right there. And it spills, their little ponds spilled right into Sinking Creek, which means it didn't get treated at all. All of these times. And there's many times that this happened, folks. Many times. So from Sinking Creek goes into Pittman Creek. Folks, kinda like Vegas, what happens in Pittman, Pittman Creek? Doesn't stay in Pittman Creek. Hold on a minute. Sorry. Pittman Creek flows into Lake Cumberland. Lake Cumberland flows into the Cumberland River, all the way down to Nashville. And again, millions of people and animals get their drinking water, their livelihood from the Cumberland River. This is appalling. It's just appalling. And last night, the city council thought they put a stop to it, until I got the phone calls today. Mayor Keck is apparently just totally defying and mocking the city council and mocking the citizens who were there. So, uh, so he's not meeting EPA standards. And he keeps saying that. He keeps saying, we meet state standards. We, everything's tested. Well, y- y- yeah, your test also, let me be crystal clear. They have not coughed up, not the state of Kentucky, cause I've hit them with open records requests. So did McShirley. No one has coughed up a test for these PFOAs or for asbestos. Let's back up a minute here. This toxic waste is coming from four different industrial demolition landfills. Folks, this is the worst of the worst toxic waste imaginable on the face of this earth is in these landfills. It rains, these landfills have liquid that kinda runs out the bottom, runoff. The federal EPA and the state EPA never state thinks that this, what's called leche, this runoff is so toxic. They have real strict standards about this stuff. You can't haul this leche unless you have a permit, a very special permit from the federal EPA to state EPA. However, the Somerset wastewater treatment plant doesn't have an industrial permit. That's right. You can't make this up. The Somerset wastewater treatment la- plant only has a general permit. That's right. They're hauling toxic waste that takes a very special industrial permit, but they don't have it themselves to process it. You can't, that's part of all these documents we dug up too. I've got all the permits. And we've posted that on post, prior shows. So, I wanna cover that. Also, I want to go back in time for a minute too. When we first, before we posted Lake Cumberland, What Really Lies Beneath and started doing shows on this, over a year ago, almost two years ago, myself and the head of Plaski County, Plaski County, um, Truth or Politics, Dan Gibson, we went and interviewed Dana Whitis, who was the head of the Somerset wastewater treatment plant. That interview was scary. I point-blank asked her, what, do you know what's in this leche? Do you know what her answer was? She put her hands in her face and started crying. That was her answer, okay? She, she couldn't have, she did not know what was in this leche. Okay? This was the head, the main, you know, HMFIC of the wastewater treatment plant, Somerset, Kentucky, admitted she didn't know what was in this leche. Didn't know. I asked her what C8 is. Have you ever heard of C8? Do you know what that is? She had no idea. This is a person running a treatment plant that's accepting toxic waste in the form of C8, that's your forever chemicals. C6, that's hexavalan chromium, okay? That's the Aaron Brockovich stuff. And, and asbestos. Now, when I first met Mayor Keck, he tried to, tried to play stupid and act like he didn't know what C8 was, okay? Keep in mind, his family runs a recycling business. So, here's my BS meter on that, okay? Um, he acted like he didn't know what C8 was. The fact that you have an individual running a wastewater treatment plant that did not know what C8 was, didn't know what fluorocarbons were, did not know what forever chemicals were, and they'd already accepted gallons, millions of gallons of this leche through her plant, and she didn't know this? You folks should find that highly scary. I did. Um, all right, it's, uh, oh, one of the things that Mayor Keck keeps saying, though, there's a lot of misinformation out there. Yeah, you're right, Mayor Keck. There is misinformation from you, from you, Mayor Keck. We have thousands of documents that back up our story. So does McShirley. You know, Attorney McShirley, who spoke last night. You know, your documents show, in fact, a lot of these documents, after we got the Attorney General's office involved, they had to make you cough these documents up, cause originally, John Adams wouldn't cough them up. Took me six months. We would have had our video done six months earlier, wouldn't we? And finally, the Attorney General's office made you cough them up.
And it wouldn't have been during the election.
Yeah. Yeah, and that was another accusation. Okay, thank you for bringing that up. Okay? To the clown that keeps going on there and saying that, uh, we're only doing this because of an election. We started investigating this four years ago, two years prior to him running for mayor. And now, you know what, three, three years and a half, almost four years to him running for governor. Now, while I may be talented, I do not possess, you know, the gift of foreseeability. I'm not clairvoyant. There's no way four years ago, I could have predicted that he was gonna run for governor. So, um, you know, here's your sign, you know? For you posting that, you're just making a fool out of yourself. Nobody believe in that. The only person believes that is you, okay? Um, let's, Never voted on a kid, why? Okay, they're only making three cents a gallon of this too. And, you know, the point that Mr. Shoemaker made was very compelling. He goes, is my wife's life, is anybody's life, is it worth getting cancer for three cents a gallon? That's what you're making off this leche. Three cents a gallon. Think about that. Think about that. Um, is somebody's life, that they're gonna get cancer from this, is it worth three cents a gallon? Well, the resounding answer from, you know, almost a- Well, the resounding answer from, you know, almost a hundred people there last night, and thank you to the entire city council, the answer to that was no. Not only no, but hell no. Unanimous vote to stop this, and he's not stopping. Okay. Also, did I already talk about blood worms in the E flu? Yeah, your system works so good, you got blood worms in the E flu, okay? Here's another one. Another lady got up, and she made the best point. I just love this gal. You gotta watch this. I, I don't have her name on here, and I apologize for not having your name. It was a blonde chick, she got up, and she was just great. This, sometimes, you know, an analogy or a picture or painting, I, I'm older, so I get this. I remember watching this. She brought up the Twilight Zone episode called Button, Button, Who's Got the Button? This was an old Twilight Zone episode. And in this episode, she talked about it very eloquently. She said, you know, if this, if you press the button, you would immediately get two hundred thousand dollars, but someone you don't know would, would die. And what that show sh- showed, that Twilight Zone episode showed, is greed. It showed how greed just takes over people, and how even though I'm gonna kill somebody, I'm gonna press that button. And that is the best analogy to what's going on here. It, it's about greed. You know, I, I've been an investigator my whole life. You know, I graduated from Eastern Kentucky University with a degree in criminology. From there, I went into the military as a military investigator. I was a captain with the US Army Military Police Corps, assigned to a criminal investigation division. That's like CSI for the army. I did that for about four years, you know, and then active duty in reserve time. From there, I became a special agent with Department of Treasury, and I was immediately handed over this new thing, I'm pretty old, called DEA, the, you know, uh, and United States Customs Service. For years and years, total of twenty years, between my military time and my treasury and customs and DEA time, total of twenty years, I did criminal investigations for the federal government as a special agent, okay? After that, came back here to Kentucky, lived in LA for a long time, folks. I'd lived in the cement jungle. I, I did a lot of undercover, we did some of the biggest investigations, some of the biggest cases out of Los Angeles area, on the mean streets of LA. After that, I was very happy and thankful to get to come home to this beautiful Daniel Boone National Forest, and I'm very fortunate to get to live where I live, and get to, you know, used to water ski and play on Lake Cumberland. I wouldn't still put my foot in it now, not after knowing this. And I'm telling you, to learn about this, to learn, oh, and after, after twenty years as a federal agent, you know, for the last twenty years, I've been playing for the defense. I am a defense, you know, a defense investigator slash expert witness. I've worked for defensive attorneys on criminal cases. That's what I've been doing. I have a lot of experience in investigations, to say the least. And this just, of all the things I've investigated, and we've investigated a lot of them, haven't we? Truth of Politics has been on the air, we're going on thirteen years. There's a lot of people that, and public officials that no longer have jobs, and I'm proud to say because of Truth of Politics. Now, that may sound mean to some of you, but if you knew what some of these people did, and we exposed, you would say, yeah, they deserve to be fired. In fact, some of them probably deserve to be in prison right now, uh, but at least we got them fired. We're very good at this, and in almost thirteen years, we have never been sued. Do you know why? Because I don't speak out of turn. If I say something, I got a document to back it up, and usually confidential, reliable confidential sources plus documents, and that's what we have here today with this. So, uh, another person, a- a- and kudos to that blonde chick, you know, lady, she was so cool. Thank you for bringing that up. She brought some other things up too. I mean, she, she, she made some good points, but that, for anybody who's ever watched Twilight Zone, especially that episode, I've watched that episode. I'm like, oh, damn, she's right. Greed, that's what this is about. That, that is exactly, go watch that episode. I'm sure you could pull it up on the internet somewhere. It's called Button, Button, Who's Got the Button, for two hundred thousand dollars. And how many people were willing to push that button and kill somebody for money? And, and that's what it comes down to. I mean, are you willing, and that's what people kept asking last night, why would you take this risk? Not just last night, but the other two times that I showed up in front of the city council, we had citizens there too, not as many. Last night was a stellar crowd. Over and over again, why would you take a risk like this? And the last, not last night, but the time before, Mayor Keck actually answered that. He said, his answer was, it's economics. Don't take my word for it. Go back and watch it. Go back to the prior city council meeting, I think it was in October. That was this answer to a bright young lady who stood up and said, "Why would you take a risk like this? You're not making that much money." "Why would you risk people's health?" And his answer was economics. And he pretty much said the same thing last night. Okay, another guy by the name of David Keller, another highly in- intelligent guy, did a great job, you know, very emotional, you know, about what happened. One of the things he said, he said, if you research, and he did his homework too. This guy, you could tell, did his homework. He said, "If you research leche, it doesn't say it may cause cancer. It says it does cause cancer." That's what it says. He's right. That's what it says. This leche, this liquid has asbestos in it, uh, PFOS. It's got the worst of the worst. Here's something else. Part of our documents here, we have the permits where, you know, the businesses, some of the biggest businesses in Plaski County, their waste, their liquid waste also goes through this wastewater treatment plant. Do you know what some of those businesses are? Guess what? The Somerset Hospital and the Somerset Cancer Center. Now, I want you to think about this. What kind of liquid waste is at a cancer center? Oh, that would be radioactive waste. You know, hexa- on the permit, it says hexavalent chromium. They're permitted to have waste of hexavalent chromium. That's what's also running through this plant. Um, that should scare everybody to death. And then to, to, just to remind everybody what hexavalent chromium is. That's the Aaron Brock. Anybody's watched the movie Aaron Brockovich? If you haven't, you need to. Go watch it. It's called, you know, it's called Aaron Brockovich. That's the name of the movie. But it's about, uh, uh, a plant up in, uh, California, not far from where I used to live, actually. Um, really destroyed a whole water system, a whole town is, is, is a ghost town because of hexavalent chromium. Go ahead.
The hospital has that permit, not the wastewater treatment. I wanna make it clear.
The hospital is permitted through the wastewater treatment plant. They have the permit for hexavalent chromium. The wastewater treatment plant only has a general permit. They don't have a toxic, they don't have an industrial waste permit. They have a general permit, and, and if they've got a new one, they haven't, I asked for them again. If they got a new one, they haven't coughed it up, okay? So, that's on them. But as of what, six months to a year ago, when they coughed up, you know, they only had a general permit, and it was twelve years old. So, they're operating a defective wastewater treatment plant, says so the state water district, says so the state EPA, on a general permit that's twelve years old. Now, if that don't make you feel warm and fuzzy, and I mean that's, you know, facetiously, nothing will. But I like what that guy said. He says, "Leche, it doesn't say it may cause cancer. It says it does cause cancer." And so, they're, they were running fifteen trucks a day, so we didn't pass it, didn't pass an ordinance. Um, I was interviewed tonight by Fox News, and one of the funniest things I, they, they came up with was, they called it landfill soup. Landfill soup, I thought that was common. Okay, so, and he knew ahead of time, did I already touch on that, that he knew ahead of time, all these things, twenty sixteen? So, Mayor Keck, you knew that your system wasn't working?
No, thank you.
Okay, let me hit that. Okay, these, uh, violations issued by the state of Kentucky, uh, water district. And, and also, there is communication. He said, "Oh, it's different. This is state water district instead of the EPA." Okay, but there's communication from the EPA, state EPA, telling you the same thing, okay? So, from, I went back as far as twenty sixteen. They started bringing this leche, this toxic waste in, in twenty nineteen. So, from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen, there, there's just tons of these violations. What's that tell you? Mayor Keck knew, you knew your system was defective, and you brought this stuff in anyway. You knew the system was defective, and you did this anyway. You did it without consulting, you know, without the approval of the city council. They said so last night. There's no ordinance, and it wasn't voted on. You did this, Mayor Keck. You did this, the box hog of leche. Um, let's see. Okay, so that begs the question. This is a mayor running for governor. Okay, and no, I, I didn't, we didn't do this because he's running for governor. Again, we started this four years ago. But you are running for governor. Here's the question. Think about this, folks. If he's willing to defy a city council who voted unanimously to stop this, if he's willing to defy the city council, and he's willing to defy all the citizens that were there last night, please go watch this city council meeting. Don't take my word for it. I, 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 I don't do this, I'm not doing it justice. Uh, the people who got up and gave testimony were amazing, and I thank them for doing that. That took a lot of guts to get up there and do that, folks. These people are not regular, you know, I'm used to this. We, we've been doing this for thirteen years. It's no big deal for me to get up in front of a bunch of people. You get used to it. Public speaking is something you just get used to. These people are not professional public speakers. None of them were. And they did a, they did a better job than I've been doing. You guys last night rocked. You did. You citizens who got up and spoke, you did a better job than I've been trying to do for a year. You did. You outdid me, and thank God you did, and I appreciate this. But, here's the thing. If he's willing to defy the citizens, who all of them there last night wanted this gone, not one person stood up there to that podium and said, "No, let's, let's keep it." Not one, not one. He's defying the whole city council. He's defying the citizen. What would happen if he did become governor? What if the legislature passed the law, and he didn't like it? I mean, would he do the same thing as governor? Ah, screw you. I don't have to follow your laws. I mean, that's a good question. That's a legitimate question. Would this guy as governor give the double men- middle finger to the Kentucky legislature? Because he sure did it. He's doing it right now, as I'm sitting here right now. He's got tanker trucks going in there. I'm telling you, I've got insiders who know. They're continuing. In fact, they're doubling up on it. So, who knows, you know, uh, what's gonna happen? Um, Fox News interviewed me today, and the guy that interviewed me called, you know, private, or, uh, emailed me back and said he interviewed Mayor Keck, and he asked him, "Are you, did you stop this? They voted last night to stop it." And Mayor Keck's answer to him was, "No, it won't take about three months to phase it out." Well, if you're doubling up because Watco wants to make as much money as quick as they can, if your system's not handling one or two trucks a day, how is it gonna handle seven trucks, fifteen trucks, twenty trucks, when they're trying to hurry up and bring this stuff and dump it in there? It's not gonna handle it. You're gonna have spillovers, you're gonna have, i- 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 this is a disaster in the making. I'm telling you, folks, this is dangerous. This is, this is damn, excuse my language, dangerous what he's doing. It, it's dangerous, and it's all on Mayor Keck, because you're defying the city council, you're defying the citizens of Somerset. And this was a short, this is a short show tonight, because (laugh) it's a special show. But we hope that you will keep, go ahead, Mike.
Is there any legalities that can be done? Can he be given a cease and desist? Can they bring charges for him defying the council?
Good answer. There's some folks working on that right now. I'm not gonna talk about that. Let's just say, um, there's some folks that are working on that right now, tonight, they're working on that to see what we could do to stop him. Um, because he's obviously not listening to the city council, and he, he had, in my humble opinion, he does not care what the citizens of Plaski County and Somerset think, and he doesn't care about the city council thought, thinks. He doesn't care. He's already shown that. He does not care. He's giving you the double middle finger, and he's bringing this stuff in, even though unanimously you voted to stop it. That's what's happening, folks. Um, so, we're gonna keep following it. Uh, we hope that there's gonna be another meeting, uh, here soon, and, uh, some action's gonna be taken. I don't wanna talk about that too much yet, because, um, it's still being formulated. We're gonna stay on this, folks, and if he denies this, that they're still bringing it in, what we're gonna do is we're gonna go out and film, again, the tanker trucks going right in there. So, um, a- and he didn't deny it to the Fox News guy. He, he, oh yeah, no big, like, no big deal. Nothing to see here. Pay no attention to the man behind the curtain. Pay no attention to that vote. It didn't mean anything, I guess. So anyways, I just wanna say a couple of thank yous again. First, I wanna thank, there's a lot of people, folks, you know, not just this story. We've been following, you know, a real important story, what's been going on with the Plaski County Sheriff's Department, and missing evidence. I'm talking some scary stuff there, and missing evidence in the Somerset Police Department. This is evidence missing from the evidence rooms, okay? We're following that too. There's a lot of stuff going on, and we have some people that put their livelihood on the line to get us this information. We have people who every day risk their jobs and their safety to bring us that disinformation. I call them my killer bees. And I tell you what, um, they're heroes. Those people are absolutely heroes. Look, I'm just a talking head sitting here, okay? And, and I've done some research and everything else, but the people behind me who make this happen, the people in the trenches who are afraid, and they, they do it anyway. They're afraid, and they do it anyway. They give us the information, they give us the leads, and we follow up on it. Those people are heroes, and I wanna personally thank you for doing that, okay? Secondly, the gutsy people last night that got up and spoke. And please go watch the city council meeting. Please, don't take my word for it. I, I'm, I'm not doing it justice. You know, the, the individuals that got up and spoke, it was compelling. It really, really was. Go ahead, Mike.
Even some of the council members did a good job.
Yeah, and I was gonna hit that next. The city council members, no good you remind me, though. He knows I forget why I'm getting old. I, I forget stuff. The city council members who spoke up, who went against the grain, you know, a- and called it like it is. You city council members that spoke up, not just voted, you stood your ground, you spoke up. You guys are heroes. You are. You're heroes to your, you, you guys got, you're all hard, man. And you have my ultimate respect to the city council members who did that, and all, you guys are total heroes. And to the rest of the city council, I wanna thank you guys for voting this down. Apparently, Mayor Keck doesn't care. (laugh) He's still bringing it in. I don't wanna tell you about that, folks. We're gonna stay on it. We're gonna keep covering it. Um, and again, thanks for everybody behind the scenes, and welcome, welcome to our new people. We will see you next time on Truth or Politics. Thanks.